Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to Pittsveiny County's Planning Commission, June the 7th, 2022. Roll call, please.
Ms. Henderson, Mr. Waters.
Present.
Mr. Horn.
Present.
Mr. Dalton.
Here.
Ms. Meese.
Present.
Mr. Oaks.
Here.
Mr. Harker.
Present.
Mr. Haymore.
Present. Let the record show seven present and one absent. Ladies and gentlemen, if you would, stand with me for a moment of silence. If you gentlemen will remove your caps and pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, which stands one nation, in the best of liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Is there any citizen here has anything that would like to bring before the commission that is not on the agenda tonight? Thank you. Approval of the agenda. I have a motion for that.
Motion to approve.
I second.
Motion by Mr. Harker, second by Ms. Meese. Ready for a vote? Let the record show seven yes and one absent. Approval of the minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve the minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Waters.
Second.
Who's second? Second, Mr. Horn. We're ready for a vote. Let the record show seven yes and one absent. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of the Pittsveiny County's zoning ordinance, we, the Planning Commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance and make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, general welfare of the citizens of Pittsveiny County. We must ensure that all decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and the best interest of Pittsveiny County, its citizens, and its prosperity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding the zoning case will be limited to three minutes. At 7:03, case R-22013 is open for public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-22013, Nguyen Properties LLC, has petitioned to rezone 6.25 acres located on State Road 1058, Oakwood Drive, in the Tunsil Election District, from RC-1 Residential Combined Subdivision District to MHP Residential Manufactured Housing Park District to allow for a mobile home park. Once the property is rezoned to MHP, all uses listed under Section 35-316 are permitted. Staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Rick Fain is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Fain, come around if you have anything that you'd like to present to us that we do not have in the package.
Yes, sir. Just on behalf of Angie Nguyen, who is the owner of Nguyen Properties LLC. She's already allowed, as I understand, to have four sites there for mobile home, as a mobile home park there. And it's been used as a mobile home park for six mobile homes, and somehow that's been grandfathered in and reduced to four. But there's sites and septic and well suitable for six units, and that's all she intends to use it for. As I understand, it's necessary to rezone it to the mobile home classification to allow for those two additional uses. So she's not petitioning it for a residential neighborhood or anything like that to be changed to allow for mobile homes. She's already authorized to have mobile homes there. She just wants it changed so that she can have the additional two that she needs there in the place where, you know, a total of six already were.
Yes, sir. Any questions for Mr. Fain from any of the commissioners?
I'd like to also add, there's been a letter from the Virginia Department of Transportation saying that they don't recommend it because of all of the additional traffic there. As I understand, evaluating a maximum number of mobile homes per acre, much, much larger than the six that Ms. Nguyen with Nguyen Properties intends to have.
Thank you, sir. We have some folks that want to speak to us, and you'll have a chance to come back.
Okay, thank you.
I've got a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Um, is her intentions to do the four regardless of what is decided tonight?
If she has a contingency on her purchase contract for the six, and if this doesn't get approved for the six, she has the option of backing out of the contract. However she may continue, she may not.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for this gentleman? Okay. We have some folks that... Jim Davis, come around. Mr. Davis, how are you, sir? Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. I'm here tonight to represent myself in opposition to the rezoning of the property. Now, I understood the, Ms. Ragsdale, she read out the information. I'd like to have a point of clarification to what she read out, please, if I'm authorized to ask that question. She said it was on State Road 1058. It's the State Road 722. So I want to make sure that we are talking about the same property.
That could have been an error on our GIs system. So that's what we had listed as the road, but that is not always accurate.
But it is Oakwood Drive.
Yes, it is Oakwood Drive.
I was going to say, we know that for a fact.
Yes.
That's fine. I just want to make sure that there's clarification into the minutes.
Yes, sir.
That a 722 is the state road number. Been there for over 38 years, lived on this road. I have noticed during my time there that state road speed limit is 25. There's probably about 60 vehicles at least on that road. It's a dead end road. As I understand, VDOT has determined this is an area of a road where they're looking at wanting to place the entrance to this mobile home park. The road is narrow and a curve. Now, I'm sure most of you have already probably have been down and looked at this area. I trust you have done your homework. I feel like you have. You're distinguished people to be on this commission. The problem that I see, though, is from the safety standpoint of the view. Yes, there's been mobile homes there before. No, she does not own the property, and yes, she does have a contract contingent. My recommendation to you is that you would deny this solely on the fact that this is not going to be a safe place to put a mobile home park. If they have the entitlement of placing all six mobile homes, to potentially actually seven with the rezoning of this with all the acres, I understand, actually they could go to seven eventually if they wanted to. Am I correct?
They could go seven per acre.
That's right. So my point is, if you have that and you have at least that many per acre, you're talking about 70 vehicles in this one mobile home park, and it will come out of the entranceway to access Oakwood Drive to go out towards 58 in the curve. And as I said, yes, it's a 25 zone, but we have enough problems trying to keep the speeders under even 50. So I'm here today asking you, encouraging you to deny this request in rezoning this mobile home to a mobile home park. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is it RT Collins? I can't make a... Ms. Collins, come around. Good evening, Ms. Collins. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Patricia Collins. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for our allowance.
Ms. Collins, pull the mic down just a little bit. There you go. Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah, I'm kind of short. I have taken the liberty of taking pictures of Oakwood Drive. I've also taken pictures of a mobile home park that was on Charming Road. Can I pass these around? This is one of the reasons why we don't particularly want another catastrophe of what we had in pass, or why we don't want another mobile home park on our road. We live there. And something delicate has been done about this. This is down on Route 58 here, down to... Those people wanting to cut the grass down there, and the poor lady that lives down there can't even get the owner to cut the grass. But that's something for somebody else to address. This here, I can submit this to you, are pictures of our road. The opening to our road is a small road section, a small opening. Coming down there is dangerous when it's a heavy traffic load. And if you turn into this road while a car is sitting there at that turn-in, you really do need to slow down because you can hit that car if you're going too fast to turn in. You look in your rearview as you're getting ready to turn or make a turn because you've got to worry about the traffic coming down and butting you in the buck and sending you down the road 100 feet and possibly killing you. You go and look at the turn-in, there's a ditch right at the turn-in to the road, which is dangerous. There's pictures of the curve. I've even put little sticky notes and everything on here. And this is where the guardrail is at the entrance right here. Even if you wanted to upgrade it and put something there, you can't put a turn lane there because it's a ditch. It's a complete straight down ditch. And I will pass this around too, so you see this. It's very unfeasible. It would take, and that's right away to the electric department. First curve coming around off of that top of that road, and it just keeps on going curve after curve after curve.
Ms. Collins, you have 30 seconds.
Okay. Well, I got... Can I submit this to you?
Yes, ma'am. You sure can.
Not to mention the fact that people who own the property is the key to the issue. My opinion, because Sandy, the property is nothing but a straight gully. All that mobile home and all the debris from it is sitting up there, nothing done, and is still sitting up there in piles. That thing, it drains down into a ditch, goes across under a little pipe into St. Hardee's Creek. Hardee's Creek, well, it goes down into...
Ms. Collins.
The pond. Then it goes into the creek.
Wrap it up, please, ma'am.
But it's in the book, and it's pictures of all of it. Please send it around.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Doris Thomas, come around, Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, ma'am. Welcome.
Hello. I come concerning the trailer park. Our property has a very long road frontage, and it is directly connected to the trailer park that they're trying to put in. Owners had a trailer park previously and attempted to increase the capacity of the trailer park. It was denied by the Pittsveiny County Board of Supervisors in 1998. Reasons for asking to deny a trailer park by Nigent Properties LLC. Chuck and I have lived at 317 Oakwood Drive 52 years since the fall of 1970. Our ages are 84 and 82 respectively. We have improved the value of our property in those 52 years, completely remodeled our home, added a shop, et cetera. The property being evaluated for trailers is directly next to our property, and the trailer park will decrease the value of our property tremendously. Not only that, but where they come out of the road at that curve, my kitchen window is directly next to the road outside of curve. Experiences with the trailer park before. Property never cared for, rubbish and high weeds. After the Pittsveiny County Commission asked the owner to clean up the property, he did. The owner threw all the rubbish across the barbed wire fence onto our property, and some landed in the creek. That creek drains into the pond, and with all the high water since 1998, all of that crap went into the pond. Chuck had to barbed wire that section off so our horses wouldn't come to harm. We have no horses now. Secondhand trailers. I witnessed a hole in the floor in the front of the bathroom on the trailer located on the top of the hill to the left. None of those trailers were never fixed. Poor-conditioned trailers. If the trailers that are being put in are not insulated, the people renting the trailers won't be able to afford the electricity, not in this county. The electricity bill will be tremendous. People will be moving in and out of the trailers continuously. There was only one way.
Ms. Thomas, you need to wrap it up, please, ma'am.
Yes. The children in the property that lived there trespassed constantly and were constantly taking the mail out of the mailbox, and the United States Postal Service had to come and take care of it.
Thank you, ma'am. Dwyer Brown. Good evening, Mr. Brown. How are you, sir?
Welcome. I'm here on behalf of myself and also my mom's back here. She alluded to the neighbors with the horses and stuff like that. That is my mom's place, and then my place is a little farther down the road, on the same road there. So I've lived in, I grew up in this area, and it was, there was a trailer park there, and it had a few houses up there. And we had some issues all the time with that, and I think they've alluded to it. I sort of echo what the last two speakers definitely said. Control of pets were up there. They were always running into other people's neighborhoods and stuff like that. The concern, of course, from my mom's side, and she's, since she borders it almost on two sides of that property, is with the horses and dogs running wild. It's not a good mix. They also had kids there, which, don't get me wrong, I love kids, but they were unsupervised a lot of times, and they ended up through the fence with the horses, and that's not a good combination. You're just asking for trouble. You know, despite what we have fencing and everything else, they would still come through. Trash was an issue. The trailer park, and it's not necessarily an indication of all trailer parks, and you're thinking, some trailer parks can be very nice. I lived in one when I was in school, and it was awesome. You know, it depends on the management. That person made them mow it every two weeks. There was no trash and everything else. It was very well controlled. What we witnessed there in the past here and what we've seen, I think she had pictures of some of the other ones around too, if it's not managed right, it can definitely be a problem because we were always picking up bottles and cans and everything else from our pastures so that our horses wouldn't have problems with it. The other things, you know, that comes down into the management of the area, the noise, environmental stuff, obviously a stress on the water table in that area. Sewers, you know, yes, there's some sites that are there, but they're so old, they probably need to be replaced. I don't know. The runoff is an issue because the pond right down below that, that was alluded to, the creek and the pond, that's my mom's pond, and it's been filled up with stuff that was runoff and everything else between just debris and trash, but also oil and stuff like that from the vehicles over there too. The, I don't know if the picture she's got does adjust it or whatever, but when you go in that, it goes down, hits that creek, and then it goes right back up the other side. It's almost like a V right into that creek. It really feeds into that pretty hard. I've always wondered how they got the mobiles homes from one side to the other anyway. It's not, it can't be that easy in my mind. The road traffic is another issue that I have with because, you know, be it the kids that may be in the mobile homes, but also just other kids and families on that road, the increased traffic is a concern on a small, narrow road. There are power lines that run over that property. They run across my mom's too. I know years ago, there was one of the mobile homes there actually sort of was underneath the power lines. Hopefully that would not be allowed today if it was allowed. They caught fire, caused the fire department problems of how to put out the fire when you've got this mobile home underneath the fire.
Mr. Fain, you have about 10 seconds.
Yep. The other thing he mentioned, you know, as far as the applicant mentioned, there would be less than six trailers there, or six or less. You know, obviously, there's nothing to guarantee that. So basically, I'd like you to decline the request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Fain, you have anything you'd like to say? You have the right to, but...
Thank you. Yeah, regarding the current allowance of four and a possible six, and as I understand, what would be allowed, seven per acre. As I think Ms. Collins brought up too, the land there would not support seven per acre by any means. It does have a plateau of where the six were previously, and then, like she said, it runs off into a gully. And so there would be, she has no plans at expanding it beyond the six whatsoever, just for the record.
Thank you, sir. Also, let the record show that I have a petition. I can't count that high. It's four pages, completely filled with opposition to this.
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
For Mrs. Ragsdale. I'm understanding what was said earlier, that as it's zoned now, the possibility for six trailers. Is that correct?
So the mobile home park is considered legal non-conforming because it was in existence prior to zoning's adoption in 1991. So I believe there were originally six trailers as far back as our aerial show. That has been reduced to four. So if the site sits vacant for more than two years, you lose the ability to replace a trailer on that site. So they have now been reduced to four mobile homes. Now, that could be reduced more if those sites, the four that they have, become vacant and sit vacant for two years. So in order to add the other two back, they would have to rezone to mobile home park. If they rezone to mobile home park, they are then guided by that section of the ordinance. And what that section of the ordinance says is they could have up to seven mobile homes per acre, as long as they could meet the lot size requirements and setbacks from trailer to trailer as laid out in that ordinance.
And that two-year time period doesn't reset a change of ownership? That's a...
No.
Okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Ragsdale?
I got a comment. I went up and looked at the property, and it didn't appear to me it was being used. And I see a whole lot of issues, especially with the driveway and the way it runs into the state maintained road. And so I can't, in my personal opinion, see change in the zone.
Anyone else for a close?
I got a comment, Mr. Chairman, which according to the packet information, it says that the entrance would have to be changed and made a commercial entrance. And according to what we have in the packet, VDOT said they would not approve a commercial entrance. So is it moot point?
VDOT went out and looked at the property, and Jay's letter is included in your packet. Jay is the Assistant Resident Engineer for the Halifax District. When he looked at the entrance, he, and he has to base his, what the entrance has to be off of the possible volume. So if there were 43 mobile homes placed there, which is what would be allowed per the ordinance density regulations, they would have to have a commercial entrance, and they do not have the site distance at that entrance in order to be approved by VDOT, which all that is stated in his email, which is included.
7:24, case R-22013 is closed to public hearing. Mr. Oaks.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion on case R-22-013 that we deny rezoning from RC-1 to MHP.
Motion by Mr. Oaks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harker. Any further discussion? Not. We're ready for a vote. Let the record show seven yes, one absent.
So the two of you that voted no, you were voting against the denial or for the denial?
Denial.
So you should have voted yes because the motion was for denial?
The motion is to deny, so you should have voted for the motion.
Same here.
Yeah, I made a motion to deny.
Denial.
Yes, sir.
Same here.
Same here.
Just to clean this up, let's just verbally go one by one and do your vote, and then we'll clean it up in the minutes, okay? Ms. Ragsdale, I can't see everybody's name. Will you just do it? Just call everybody.
Mr. Oaks.
I voted to deny it.
Ms. Meese.
To deny.
Mr. Dalton.
Yes, to deny.
Mr. Haymore. Mr. Harker.
To deny.
Mr. Horn.
Deny.
Mr. Waters.
Deny.
Okay. We'll have the minutes reflect the true vote.
At 7:26, case R-22016 is open for public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-22-016, Jasmine Ruiz, has petitioned to rezon 2.16 acres located on State Road 799 Climax Road in the Callens-Gretner Election District from B2 Business District General to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to allow the property to be used as a single-family dwelling. Once the property is rezoned to R1, all uses listed under Section 35-222 are permitted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Jasmine Ruiz is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Ruiz, yes, ma'am, you may come around. Welcome. Is there anything you would like to tell the commissioners that's not in the packet?
I don't think so. This is my first home. I bought, when I bought it, the real estate agent had told me that I could live in it if I wanted to. I could change the zoning if I wanted to. It was up to me, and I, first experience, I was naive, and I'm learning my lesson now. So I'm just trying to make it so that I can live in the lower part of my home like I had intended.
Yes, ma'am. Any questions for this lady? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Emily.
At 7:28, case R-2216 is closed to public hearing. Ms. Meese.
Mr. Chairman, in case R-22-016, make a motion that we rezon the properties from B2 Business District General to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District. Make a motion to the Board of Supervisors.
Motion by Ms. Meese.
Second motion.
Second by Mr. Horn. Any further discussion? Not. We're ready for a vote. Let the record show seven yes, one absent. The case R-22016 be rezoned from B2 to R1 and recommended to the Board of Supervisors. R-1 and recommended to the Board of Supervisors. Seven twenty-nine, case R-22-017 is open for public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-22-017, Bradley and Heather Behren have petitioned to rezone 23.81 acres located on Atlantic Timber Lane in the Callens-Grettna election district from RE Residential Estates District to A-1 Agricultural District to allow for the placement of accessory building and a Class B home occupation. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Bradley Behren is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Behren. Come around, sir. Good evening, welcome. You have anything you'd like to add that we don't have in our packet?
Just, you know, I've got to keep my mask down. I've got cancer, so just my apologies if you can't hear me very well. We're here to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Behren? I don't think so, Mr. Behren. I believe you're in good shape.
I think it's self-explanatory. No questions here.
At seven thirty, case R-22-017 is closed to public hearing. Ms. Meese, again.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in case R-22-017, make a motion to the Board of Supervisors that this case be rezoned, the properties from RE Residential Estate District to A-1 Agricultural District, and I may add, the comprehensive plan designates the future land use as agriculture and rural residential.
Motion by Ms. Meese.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harker. Any further discussion? Not, we're ready for a vote. Let the record show seven yes, one absent, that case R-22-17, 23.81 acres be rezoned from RE to A-1 and be recommended to the Board of Supervisors. Seven thirty-two, case R-22-018 is open for public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-22-018, Robert and Angela Carlberg have petitioned to rezone 10.41 acres located on Reservoir View Drive in the Stanton River election district from R-1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A-1 Agricultural District to allow for the placement of accessory building in the front yard. Once the property is rezoned to A-1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Robert Carlberg is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Carlberg, do you have anything that you'd like to add or say that we don't have in our packet?
Nothing to add, just here to answer questions.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Carlberg? Not, thank you, sir. Seven thirty-three, case R-22-018 is closed to public hearing. Mr. Harker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In case R-22-018, make a motion that we recommend to the Board of Supervisors to grant this zoning request from R-1 to A-1.
Motion by Mr. Harker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Waters. Any further discussion? Not, we're ready for a vote. Let the record show seven yes, one absent, that case R-22-018, 10.41 acres be rezoned, be recommended to the Board of Supervisors, be rezoned from R-1 to A-1. Seven thirty-four, case R-22-019 is open for public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-22-019, the Industrial Development Authority of Pennsylvania County has petitioned to rezone 36.5 acres located at Brasville Industrial Trail in the Tunstall election district from M-1 Industrial District Light Industry to M-2 Industrial District Heavy Industry to allow for more intensive industrial uses. Once the property is rezoned to M-2, all uses listed under Section 35-402 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, I don't believe that there's a representative from the IDA or Economic Development here, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
This is nothing more to be able to put a larger building or a taller building or something, is that...
Economic development has had some potential prospects that have more intensive industrial uses than are allowed in M-1. So, they're looking to have a property that they can at least, that is located within their industrial parks, that they can show potential clients that come and are interested in relocating or opening a business in Pennsylvania County.
At seven thirty-five, case R-22-019 is closed to public hearing. Mr. Oaks.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion in case R-22-019 that we change the zoning from M-1 to M-2.
Motion by Mr. Oaks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Horn. Who is it?
Mr. Harker.
I'm sorry, Mr. Harker.
Paid it, ma'am.
Can't hear. I'm sorry. Any discussion? Not, we're ready for a vote. Let the record show seven yes, one absent, that case R-22-019, 36.5 acres be rezoned from M-1 to M-2, recommended to the Board of Supervisors. Seven thirty-six, case R-22-023 is open for public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case R-22-023, Industrial Development Authority of Pennsylvania County has petitioned to rezone 51.04 acres located on State Road 1299 Kane Creek Parkway in the Dan River election district from M-1 Industrial District Light Industry to M-2 Industrial District Heavy Industry to allow for more intense, intensive industrial uses. Once the property is rezoned to M-2, all uses listed under Section 35-402 are permitted. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy to represent this case as well if you have any questions.
It's the exact same thing that you just...
Yes, sir. This property is a little larger, it's located in a different industrial park, but they are petitioning to rezone it for the same reasons.
Any questions for Ms. Ragsdale? If not, seven thirty-seven, case R-22-023 is closed to public hearing. Mr. Horn.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to the Board of Supervisors that we approve this zoning request.
Motion by Mr. Horn.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dalton, or whoever, who was it? Was you, Mr. Waters, was you first? Mr. Waters, I'm sorry. Any discussion? Let the record show seven yes, one absent, that case R-22-023, 51.4 acres be rezoned from M-1 to M-2 and recommended to the Board of Supervisors. Seven thirty-eight, case S-22-009 is open for public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case S-22-009, Mark Blanchett has petitioned for a special use permit on 19.76 acres located on State Road 58 Martinsville Highway in the Tunstall election district for a campground. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Mark Blanchett is here to represent the petition.
Blanchett, come around, sir, if you have anything that you'd like to add that we do not have in the packet?
This place has been operating for 20 years. I bought it six months ago. It's an RV park, just trying to expand it. There are so many projects going on in the area, and these out-of-town workers are coming in, and they're deeding spots. I get calls all day, every day, and I'm just trying to get everything approved so I can expand and accommodate these people coming in.
Any questions for this gentleman? Thank you, sir. At seven forty, case S-22-009 is closed to public hearing. Mr. Oaks.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion in case S-22-009 that we issue a special use permit for a campground.
Motion by Mr. Oaks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Dalton.
Is that worth the conditions?
Yes, I was going to say, I had it right here. You know about the, I know it's a couple of conditions. Ms. Ragsdale, he's familiar with those, I'm sure.
I'm not sure if he's seen them, but I can, I'll be happy to read them. Staff recommended that any future expansion will require site plan approval by the Pennsylvania County Community Development Office to ensure compliance with all applicable zoning regulations, and it must remain in compliance with all applicable Virginia Department of Health regulations.
You're familiar with that?
I've got a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Dalton.
District, it says Dan River. State is a Tunstall district?
Is that just a typo?
Is that just a typo?
On the staff summary, yes.
Yeah, it just says Dan River.
Yes.
Make sure the record was right.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, it says Tunstall in Exella, so it is in Tunstall district.
Mr. Oaks, did you make the...
Yes, I made a motion.
And you seconded it, Darrell?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We're ready for a vote. Let the record show seven yes, one absent, that case S-22-009, a special use permit on 19.76 acres be recommended to the Zone of, Board of Zoning Appeals. Seven forty-two, case S-22-010 is open for public hearing.
Case S-22-010, Deborah Goodwin has petitioned for a special use permit on 1.56 acres located on State Road 718 Drifework Road in the Tunstall election district for the placement of a double-wide mobile home. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Deborah Goodwin is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Goodwin, do you have anything that you would like to say or add to the, that the commissioners do not have in their packet? Any more commissioner have any questions for Ms. Goodwin? If not, at seven forty-two, case S-22-010 is closed to public hearing. Mr. Oaks, I believe that's you again, you on a roll, aren't you?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion in case S-22-010 that we issue a special use permit to allow a double-wide mobile home.
Second.
Second by Mr. Horn. Let the record show seven yes, one absent, that case S-22-010, special use permit on 1.56 acres be recommended to the Board of Zoning Appeals. At seven forty-three, case S-22-012 is open for public hearing. Ms. Ragsdale.
Case S-22-012, Donna Clay has petitioned for a special use permit on 5.5 acres located on State Road 1246 Evangel Drive in the Dan River election district for a public garage. The staff summary is enclosed in the board packet. Mr. Chairman, Ricky Clay is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Clay, come around. You have anything that you'd like to add that we do not have in our packet?
I don't.
You do not?
I answer any questions you got.
Any questions for Mr. Clay?
Got a couple of conditions also on this one. One of...
Yes, sir. I'm sure he's familiar with those.
He and I have discussed them tonight.
Mr. Horn, I think you had, haven't you?
We've had discussion, yes.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Clay? Thank you, Mr. Clay. At seven forty-four, case S-22-012 is closed for public hearing. Mr. Horn.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. In case S-22-012, I recommend that we approve a special use permit and request approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals, and Mr. Clay is aware of the conditions by the staff.
Motion by Mr. Horn.
Second.
Second by Ms. Meese. Any further discussion? Not, we're ready for a vote. Let the record show seven yes, one absent, that case S-22-012, special use permit on 5.5 acres be recommended to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Ms. Ragsdale, we have the variance?
Yes, so we have no old business. Under new business, we do have a variance, and these go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, and the public hearing is held before the Board of Zoning Appeals. However, state code requires that the planning commission have the opportunity to make a recommendation if they so choose to do so. So, the variance is case V-22-001. Tanisha Breedlove has petitioned for a variance on State Road 1555 Fox Trail, and she is request, in the Westover election district, she's requesting a variance to Section 35-226, which is the minimum yard dimensions front setback of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance. There is a staff summary enclosed in your packet. This is not a public hearing, so you all, if you choose to make a recommendation, you will just need to make a motion and then vote on that.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion to approve this, to go to the BZI Board for approval.
Motion, Mr. Dalton.
Second.
Second by Mr. Waters. Any further discussion? Darren, waiting on you. Need a vote. Let the record show seven yes, one absent, that V-22 be recommended to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the variance.
Additionally, under new business, you will have a quite lengthy meeting next month. You'll have five rezoning cases, and there are six special use permit cases, and I believe you have that case information in front of you. Additionally, I would like to notify all the planning commission members that at the Board of Supervisors meeting this month, which is not next Tuesday, but the Tuesday after that, the board will adopt a resolution honoring Mr. Harker and his wife. They both received awards. Mr. Harker for Lager of the Year.
That's correct.
And his wife for Teacher of the Year at Liberty University.
That's correct.
So, they will be honoring them at the board meeting if any of you would like to attend.
Yeah, outstanding.
That's July, right?
That's June, the June, 21st meeting at 7:00 PM in this room.
Mama won't go let daddy out, do she?
She won't.
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
Yes, sir.
Double difference.
We're going to retire now to go out on top.
Behind every good man is a good woman.
We'll jurn.
That's the truth.
All right.[1789.36]